I'd like to call the Hudsonville City Commission Regular Session dated October 11, 2022 to order. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bolheiss?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Debray?
Here.
Groth?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. I believe that Commissioner LaRar is at a conference this week, so he sent me a text saying, "Apologize for not being here." Now is the time for a moment of silence. There are two items I wish to, perhaps we could all reflect on. One is the promotion of three of our colleagues in the fire department, and Fire Chief will be speaking to that briefly. And I also like to have a moment of silence to reflect on the journey of our city manager and his new position, this being his last City Commission meeting for 12 years. So we'll have a moment of silence, then we'll go into public comments. Thank you. Public comments, I believe the Lake Shore Advantage is here to provide an update. Good evening.
Good evening. Got a presentation for you guys tonight. You guys saw me a couple of months ago for the Business Intelligence Report presentations. This one's slightly different. Kind of our annual investor update, WDR, around this time of the year. So just as a reminder of who we are, Lake Shore Advantage, we're the economic development organization for Ottawa and Alleghen Counties. Been doing this since 2001 in Holland, Zealand, and it expanded to Ottawa County in 2010 and Alleghen County in 2018. My name is Greg King. I'm the Senior Business Solutions Manager at Lake Shore Advantage. So I head up all retention efforts for our team. So that would be about 700 employers that we connect with, work with, solve challenges for, and those 700 are what we call primary employers. So any employer who designs or manufactures a good service that is primarily consumed inside or primarily produced or manufactured here in our region but is primarily utilized or consumed outside of our region. So that's a quick snapshot. We've got our core focus areas here. This is what drives organizations. It's been driving organizations for the last five years. So we maintain a robust primary business space at all stages of development, tackle economic challenges and opportunities, and look forward to ensuring long-term economic health. So all of this to ensure that current and future generations want to live and work in our vibrant economy. So how are things going in the city of Hudsonville? Very well. We have engaged with six of the 28 that we have in the area. We've got two projects coming up, one of which is on the docket later tonight for the Industrial Development District, and that's Apex Controls. They recently purchased a building next door to them, CSM Services, and are expanding into that, and they're expanding their facility as well. And I think I'll be coming back to you here in a couple of months with hope for a tax payment, but as well, we believe that there'll be Michigan Economic Development Corporation support for that project. Also working on West Michigan Beef's project. Been doing that for a while. Hoping to get there soon. They ran into some cost overruns because of supply chain challenges. I will have that hopefully here before the end of the year, so working on that diligently. We do have one startup that we're working with in the city of Hudsonville, Giftwise. So they're involved in our SURGE program. That is our brand for our entrepreneurship programming. So they come to our entrepreneurship incubator in the city of Holland and receive funding and support from mentors in our team there. That is a picture of the new pilot business incubator in the city of Holland. That's on the fourth floor of the Riverview Building. I just tell people it's above where Butch's Dry Dock is across from Ferris Coffee in downtown Holland. We moved into that space and share half of it with Collective Idea. We have 31 active members, entrepreneurs, who are utilizing the space, and that's throughout the region. And they've so far received more than $10 million in funding, venture capital and otherwise, for their efforts. So it's been a very active space. I think we're going to see another 20 active members here before the end of the year. Manda Chaco, our Director of Entrepreneurship, is doing a great job in there. So more news to come on that incubator. So following the model, the management of technical challenges, so these are the three areas we're working on. Industry 4.0, that's the whole automation, robotics, system integration, simulation, that big push that we're seeing nationwide and here in the state. The state's made it a goal that by 2025, half of all the manufacturers in the state of Michigan are adopting these technologies. And so we want to be ahead of where the state's going. So we did 205 quick polls for our companies throughout the region, asking them what they were looking for, what they were doing. Found that while they're not quite there yet for adopting industry 4.0, what they really want to do before they do that is expanding their spaces, adding additional warehouse and distribution space. I think we've seen it with Altron Automation, adding a space over in Genesee, and then recently ITC incorporating, adding a space over in Zealand Township. So they're not supplanting their headquarters or anything, but just for a lack of space and warehousing and distribution, that's what they're pursuing. Infrastructure, last week was the big announcement of the $65 million wastewater pipeline between the city of Coopersville and Mesquian County. So that will allow Fairlife and Continental Dairy and a couple of other food processors to increase their wastewater capacity, which was restricting them from expanding in the two counties here. So more to come on that. And then the last part of it was the ARPA Stabilization Fund through Ottawa County. I'm sure Patrick in his new role will get to become acquainted with that pretty quick. Lake Shore Advantage was selected to manage one of the bucket funds, the Business Stabilization Fund. So that funding will go to any businesses that were, any projects that help businesses that were impacted negatively by the pandemic. So we have an advisory committee. We've got some proposals that Manny Cooper, our Vice President of Strategic Initiatives, and Joe Pierce, our Grant Specialist, have been working towards. And I think we'll have an announcement here on what those will look like in the coming weeks. And looking forward, we're working on efforts around welcoming the diverse emerging workforce. We've got an aging population, but a fast-growing one as well at the youth level. We have a population that is changing in different ways all the time. And then I don't think it can go anywhere without talking to our companies without hearing about housing and childcare and post-secondary education. We're very excited to have GRCC's Lake Shore Campus now in Holland. It's at full enrollment, and they've got great relationships with some of our area employers, working on some housing developments in and around Holland, Zealand Township, et cetera. We received, in tandem with the LG Energy Expansion, there's a $10 million workforce housing loan that the state has promised that will be used to leverage an additional 1,500 housing units in the city of Holland, Holland Township, the city of Zealand, and Zealand Township. So lots of activity there. These are our primary focuses for Lake Shore Advantage, but we are supporting them as much as possible. And then West Michigan Works, key ally, key partner right now, is the Going Pro Talent Fund. Season, I like to say. The Going Pro Talent Fund is a fund that gives employers funding for training and hiring of full-time employees. There's $55 million allocated from the state. There's $40 million last year. Of the $40 million last year, nine companies in the city of Hudsonville received support. That was $576,000, and that was for training of 394 employers. I've already had four meetings this year for the next round of funding. Things are looking promising, especially with some of the growth we're seeing in the city of Hudsonville. So I would not be surprised if you see that number increase by the time I do this presentation again next year. And I already mentioned one of our new team members, Joe Pierce. He's our Grant Specialist, just with all the grant opportunities that are coming down through ARPA and at state level. We also had Mason Crawl. He is our Business Solutions Manager, just because we've seen a record number of projects this year. We've had more projects this year than we've ever had before. We have so far 24 expansions in the region, and we anticipate hitting 30 by the end of the year. I mean, whether it's small companies expanding all the way to your big news LG Energy Solution and GenTechs and those expansions, providing support in that. So I'm a big fan of Mason. He's a big asset for me, helping me manage my workload. And then just looking at how we're funded, we are a nonprofit organization, funded 60% by the private sector and 40% by the public sector in foundations and grants. So for every dollar that was invested in Lake Shore Advantage in 2021, we returned $162 in private investments through expansions and funding for our primary employers. And then you guys are one of our partners on the public side, have been a partner with us for a long time. The city of Hudsonville, on an annual basis, does fund us at the $5,000 level, which we sincerely appreciate, helps with our efforts in the city and beyond. And this presentation is part of that request. And that is the presentation for you guys. Any questions?
Anything, Dave? Greg, with the one question I had, in grant support, does that include support to the city if we were to request it?
For some of the grants, it could be. I think there's so many different grants that are coming down from the federal level to the state level to the local level. What that support is, again, Lake Shore Advantage, we're there primarily for the employers, but we have seen an uptick in requests for support at the city level with some state projects for housing, et cetera. So I think we would be open to that. I guess I could speak for Joe, that he'd be excited to hear about that and would love to support you guys in any way possible.
Because we kind of feel at the city level, we're maybe missing some opportunities for some grants, and then maybe something that we would seek to resource, at least maybe help writing them or finding them.
Yeah, I think Joe would definitely be able to help with that. And then we have a new Community Development Manager at the NBC, Mackenzie Miller, just started, she covers Mostabod County. I think I lost my sound there for a second, but we could definitely, we're here in our meeting with you guys to talk about some of those programs.
Very good. Any questions from the commission? Patrick?
No. Appreciate the support over the years and everything you guys have done for Hudsonville.
We get our $5,000 worth. We know that.
Jennifer knows that you want to grab a look at her, so it's after her birthday. She's in Mexico right now. It's on the list.
Okay. Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, guys.
Anybody else from the public choose us to address the dais tonight? While Jill gets new batteries, it always goes dead at the most inopportune time, doesn't it, Jill? Moving on to the consent agenda items, there are seven. Minutes of City Commission Work Session dated September 13th, City Commission dated September 13th, City Commission Special Session dated September 27th, Planning Commission dated September 21st, Personnel Committee dated 27th of September, Minutes of Act 198 Committee dated September 29th, which I believe you'll be speaking to briefly later tonight, Tobin, and the Election Commission dated October 6th. Are there any changes to those minutes as presented by the city clerk? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
It's been moving supported. Last chance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Moving on to new business, public safety. First up is the new Fire Chief. Welcome.
Good evening. For the month of September, we had 43 calls for service. The only calls that I noted there were we had a couple of structure fires. They were both electrical in nature. One was a dishwasher, and the other was an air conditioner. So they were both quickly extinguished and minimal damage, so that was good. Report also shows our training and the meetings. It was a busy month. September is usually busy, following right after the fair, and then October's fire prevention. So we're right in the middle of that this week. So we'll be going to the schools this week for fire prevention. That kind of gives you a snapshot of what we did through the month of September. Any questions on the report?
I just, as general comment, your training night up at the Nature Center, I just thought that was very bold, and I don't know where you came up with that idea, but I thought that was...
We've done that a few different years.
Yeah?
Yep. Put somebody down in the ravine and then work on getting them back up. So it's exercising ropes and knots and also using the tools and equipment that we have to get somebody back up. And we've used it. We've used it up on the highway, down in, somebody goes down the gully or whatever, gets somebody back up. So that skill has been used a few times.
Just very good. I was really impressed with that. Any comments from the commission here?
Chief, can you expound on some of the virtual webinars that you participate in with the software? Just kind of give an overview of what that's going to mean for the department and kind of the differences of the two programs you're looking at?
Right. So over the past few months, we've been kind of looking at different software possibilities for doing inspections, but also pre-plans. So a pre-plan is just that, we look at every business and say, okay, what are we going to do if we get a call there? What resources do we need? Where do we stage them? Where's their key box location? Where's their fire hub connections? Where's their alarm panel? All those things can be put into a software. Currently, we have all those done, but they're all on paper. Paper's a little harder to get to at times. Electronic makes it a little easier. When you go out and do inspections, it makes it a little easier if you have that same template and then just inspect from that. So we've been looking at a couple of different companies. The webinars that I attended, one was called Mobilize, and they're from the state of Michigan. It's a very robust company. They do a good job, a lot of data, fairly pricey, but it does a good job. When you go out in the field and do your inspection, every violation that potentially could be there is listed. You would just touch on it, take pictures of it, and then when you go back to do the follow-up, you know exactly what you're looking for in that follow-up. And then when they correct it, you make note of that, and that record is kept there forever. There's another company called APX that does very similar as that, but also does a little better on the pre-plan side, a little more information. So for instance, if we would have a structure, an address come up that was pre-planned, their software will tell us the size of the building, what fire flow is needed, which hydrants are the closest ones, what the GPM capability is of those hydrants. So if we know we need 3,000 GPM and the hydrant's only good for 1,500, we know we need two. And it'll tell us the lays from that hydrant to that structure. So all of that helps us in our pre-planning, but also mutually automatic aid coming in. We can kind of set our resources up. So pretty neat stuff. It's going to take a little time to get that all into play, but in the very near future here, I think we're going to be making a recommendation on which one to go with and move forward to that. Currently, taking a CLAS, last week and this week, to be certified NFPA inspector. That's been down in Kalamazoo. I have three days left. It's been grueling, but a lot of information, a lot of good information. A lot of it already know, but now we're just kind of figuring out where the code says it. So it's been interesting.
And that information, Steve, is available real time in the truck on the way. So we're setting up with iPads in the vehicles so that they have that information at the ready when they get there.
Yep. So that would be triggered by the dispatch. So dispatch would send us out to a particular address. That pre-plan would come right up on the screen, and firefighters would have that at their disposal on the way they call.
So is it purchase that software a one-time purchase or like a subscription?
It's an annual. It's an annual maintenance. Yep.
And then that would be budgeted? I think we've already budgeted for it, haven't we?
Right. So that's what we're kind of working through right now, and just kind of figuring out where to take that from and how to make it work, how to make it happen.
Yeah. We don't have it specifically called out this year, but going forward, we'll have it. But there's money in the budget to cover the first year for us. We just need to determine if we're pulling it from IT or the fire department budget.
Cool. Very good. Thank you, Chief.
All right. With that, we have some promotions within the department. As I was promoted to chief, that opened up a spot below. So at this time, I'd like to call Jason Moore up here. Jason has been with our department for 29 years. He has served as firefighter, lieutenant, and also captain. And after the interviews, Jason stood out as being the best candidate for deputy chief. So Jason has been promoted to deputy chief. He will serve in an administrative role assisting me in the department as well as on the command side at the fire scene. So Jason, congratulations. Thank you. I'm going to give one side of the pen and I'm going to leave it just like that.
No speech, Jason? No speech?
Ah, no.
Okay.
With Jason moving up to deputy chief, that opened up a spot for captain. So at this point, I'd like to call up Craig Sterling. Craig has been a firefighter with our department for 24 years. Craig also serves as a team leader for the Ottawa County Hazmat and Technical Rescue Team. Craig brings many years of experience to the role of captain. He will also serve as our state-registered training officer, something that's important. Craig is also certified as Instructor One, so that's also a very important thing. So join me in congratulating Craig as our captain. And then I'd like to call up Pete Hanemeyer. Pete is currently serving as our lieutenant, and he has agreed to continue to serve in that role. Pete has been with our department for 17 years, and actually, he served most of that time as lieutenant. We also have asked Pete to take on an additional task of working with firefighters that desire to take fire officer training. That's a needed thing in our department, is to get some of the younger people trained up in the fire officer. And our hope is that he can mentor them and prepare them for a future role as an officer within our department. So join me in congratulating Pete on the rank of lieutenant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. I might want to add that between the four of you, there's well over 100 years of duty and dedication to your profession and the city, well over 100 years. And that speaks well for that longevity and dedication. And as you know, we couldn't be a functioning city without a professional police department. We know that, and we appreciate that, and continue that journey for all of your fire chiefs and firefighters.
Yep. It's not just the four officers here, it's every one of these guys sitting here. Yep.
Very good.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Steve. Moving on to the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, they have cake. There's cake upstairs.
Yeah, I don't blame you. Take off the cake. Jeff, you have to stay. Jeff? Nice try, Jeff.
Well, I'm not going to beat that one tonight, that's for sure. That's quite a thing to happen. Month of September actually slowed down for us over the summer, so that's good. 189 calls. Our traffic contacts did go up in 170 traffic contacts. That means 170 traffic stops in the city by our guys. So they are diligently working very hard. As you probably all have seen, the radar signs are up. They are great. I've had a lot of fun with them, and I can't wait to see the data that's going to be coming from them. So I think I've gotten a story from the mayor already, how effective it was.
The Mustang that passed me the right side during 55 until he hit the sign. And those brake lights went on.
And like I was telling a couple earlier, I had the privilege of sitting at the Church Reform Church on 32nd, the north parking lot, after they were installed, and all the cars go by that sign, see what their speed is, and then they see me, and then I stop them. It's been quite comical, so it's been fun.
It's been, it's great safety, most importantly. It's funny, but it's also about safety.
It is great. Even just sitting there, even in my personal vehicle, the brake lights, people are slowing down. It's well needed on that road in the amount of traffic that we've had. Other than that, month of September, we did have a couple of different training opportunities for all the deputies throughout the county. We usually do in-service training quarterly, plus some legal updates. As you can imagine, law has changed consistently, and we need to somehow stay up to date on those. So most of our guys also had to go do a four-hour legal update. I wouldn't say it's probably not the funnest class, but it is definitely needed. So that's what I have for September. Any questions from anybody?
I hear the new Deputy Director for the county is a proponent of the body cams.
Oh, really? Can't wait to see who that is and have a conversation. No, actually, it is a good thing. Most of our guys are for it because they've got nothing to hide. So it's only going to help us in the long run, so it's a good thing.
Sarge, can you give an update on the vehicle status? Deputy Potmer's car was wrecked in that...
There is no update.
Okay. Just so that they're aware, we're down a car right now.
We're still down a car from Deputy Potmer's. His was a 2021. It was a brand-new cruiser. Right now, I mean, just to even get a police Ford Explorer is nearly impossible. Of the seven that were damaged, we fixed, I think, three, and so we're still down four. We were able to find one in the country for police interceptor kind. We always, we budgeted for several cruisers for 2023, and those were supposed to be confirmed this month. We just found out that they've already canceled some of those as well, Ford has. So it is definitely not easy to find those cars. So we're working through it. We're just going to be patient. Hopefully, in the next few months, we can find some.
So we may see cars around town with other jurisdictions, stickers on them. That's kind of why I'm...
When you have three cruisers that are completely totaled, and there's only so many in the county, so if you see a car that says Georgetown or something else on it, it's just because we were able to use that car for a while. That's it. So I'd rather have them be in a car than that says something besides Hudsonville than not have a car. So that's what we're doing. Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick. Also heard from residents how much they love those signs, and I noticed...
Oh, good. I haven't gotten too much feedback, so...
Yeah, just folks glad that people are slowing down as they head into the neighborhood areas. I noticed in your report that they come down when inclement weather comes. Do they go back up when inclement weather leaves, or?
Well, I guess the thought would be, it would be maybe mid to late November, take them down, wait until April to put them back up.
Awesome.
The salt would just wreck those things. So yeah, so that's the goal. And our goal is just to keep them on 32nd. That's our highest traffic by far for our roads, besides obviously Chicago Drive, but the traffic numbers are way up, and it definitely needs any assistance it can get to slow people down, especially before the road died. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, you're up.
All right. Nothing real exciting in my report. Things are mostly routine, except for, you may notice, the outdoor warning siren test that we did in September. It was supposed to be one where each municipality or whoever has a control point runs their own sirens. So I was down there to do ours and clicking on the thing, and nothing was happening, and running the door, and nothing was happening. And so the county ended up running our test for us. So we've got a problem in how the software is programmed on a computer down there. And I'm working with West Shore. Basically, just some of the buttons weren't programmed right. We'll get that resolved. But what I wanted to assure you was, if there was an emergency, I wouldn't have used that anyway. We have literally a black box sitting next to it. You turn a key, push two buttons, and the sirens go. So yeah, that's really what we do is the computer gives us reports and gives us the ability to check status, pull the sirens, do some other kind of tests. We can do like just a rotation test, just make sure the thing will go around. So that's what the computer gives us, but I can tell you, when I've done it for real, I use the black box. It's just easy and reliable. So we are not without any capabilities right now. Any questions?
Hearing none. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 11, Finance City Treasurer's Monthly Report. Kayla, welcome back.
Thank you. It's nice to be back. Okay, we will start with the General Fund Summary Report. This is new fiscal year. Last fiscal year numbers for June, I just want to clarify, are not final yet. We're having the audit actives this week, and the auditors are going to be on-site tomorrow and Thursday. So I'm hoping they get everything they need from us this week and within the next few months have the final reports. But starting for August, we're already at 52.9% of our budgeted revenues and at 27.74% of our budgeted expenditures. So that means that for August, we took in a little bit over $2.7 million. 2.4 of that was just property taxes. So it was a busy month for tax collection. 2.4 of that was just property taxes, so it was a busy month for tax collection. That brings our year-to-date to a little bit over $3.1 million. On the expense side, we expensed out $290,237 in August, bringing our annual to a little bit over $1.7 million. Any questions on those reports? Okay, so we'll move on to the investment report. Good news is that interest rates are up.
And the bad news is?
Interest rates are up.
Interest rates are up.
Interest rates are up, so... What I've been doing investment-wise is taking advantage of the CDs that are maturing and just going ahead and reinvesting in them. I'm still doing short-term because we're expecting more rate hikes, you know, from the Fed. I can't guarantee that, but that's just kind of what we've been hearing. So I've still been keeping them short-term to take advantage of the higher rates in the near future. So you can see under MBS, so multi-bank securities, I went ahead and got a new bond at 3.17%. That brought our annual or average rate of return to 1.38, which is not great. But again, that's going to start increasing as I start renewing these at better rates. But overall, for the month of August, we earned $9,833.61 in interest. Not too bad. Any questions on the investment report?
Hearing none. Thank you. We will move on to payment of the bills. Is there a motion?
Jill, would you mind throwing up the agenda?
The agenda?
Or minute. Yeah, thank you. I'm going to make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $911,399.33, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the Finance Committee.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions on payment of the bills? Hearing none. Roll call, please. City Clerk?
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Pay the bills. Moving on to ACH Funds Distribution. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the funds distributed by Automated Clearinghouse in the amount of $378,154.82, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
I second that motion.
Moved and supported. Any questions on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. City Clerk?
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Distribute the funds. Moving on to Administration. Item 14. Is there a motion to change the regular city commission meeting date?
I make a motion to change the November regular city commission meeting date from November 8, 2022, to November 15, 2022, due to the general election taking place on November 8.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Contrary belief, this was not planned by Patrick to avoid one last meeting. This was driven by the general election that will be held November 8, and Jill will be very busy that night, too, I'm sure. Any questions on the date of that change? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, the city commission date has been changed. I assume that's posted on Facebook and in the media, right?
It will be. I have to put a notice up, too.
Okay, do I need to sign anything for that, too, or not? Moving on to item 15, Apex Controls, R E L L C Industrial Development District. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 22-1747 to set a public hearing for November 15, 2022, to consider the request of Apex Controls, R E L L C, to establish an industrial development district for parcel 70-18-05-226-003.
It's been moved and supported. Patrick, you have any words on this for us, or...
Well, I would defer to Tobin on the Act 198 Committee for this.
Yep, we met regarding this. Was Mason there? Is that...? Okay, so we met Mason. He did a good job. Basically, the application from Apex is for a tax abatement coming forth, but this industrial development district is required as part of that process as to accommodate the improvements they're going to do on the building that they purchased next door, totaling, I think, $800,000 for that, and then $200,000 in personal property improvements. And they're expecting to bring in 30-ish jobs as a result of that. So the motion was to present that to the commission here for approval.
For a tax abatement?
For the industrial development district.
Establish district.
Yep.
Well, essentially, we're setting the hearing tonight.
Setting the hearing tonight.
To do that, so...
But not approving the abatement.
Right, yep, to create, to give the abatement, you have to first create the district, and you have to do that in a special hearing.
How much, well, 30 or 40 employees for a million dollars investment is, I would say, a pretty good return, just for my... Wow, that's good.
And I might add, there's not going to be like industrial traffic. It's mostly light truck traffic.
Engineers, yeah.
It's light manufacturing. They're assembling the components that go in the boxes, not the stuff that they're... Not the heavy industrial stuff, so it'd be fitting for that area.
Is this six years or the full 12?
Full 12 is what they're talking about, yeah. And that's just on the improvements, not the existing.
Right, yep.
Now, at the hearing, will we discuss actual financials, too, or not?
I would imagine that'd be a consideration.
At the hearing, you can have that information, certainly, in terms of what's the tax, lost tax revenue for those 12 years. Yeah, we can provide that information, I'm sure. I'm kind of looking around, because that's something you probably have a better handle on.
Specifically for the district, the company will be there on the 15th. If you have any questions, then there'll be a second public hearing for the tax abatement.
Tax abatement. So there'll be two.
There'll be two, yes. The district is necessary for them to apply for tax.
Any questions from the commission? Hearing none. There's an open motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, appreciate your support on that, Tobin, and the committee, I believe, some new members in the committee. Jack's son, Evan, was on the committee, and he had some correspondence with him. He said he does this all day, working for the state. It was like he just went from one job to the next.
It's up his alley.
It's up his alley. It was a...
He's an intelligent individual. It's good to have him on the meeting. Good to have him on the committee.
Yeah.
Good job, Mayor.
Well, good job, Dad. Very good. Greg, appreciate your continued support here, and as you know, we need that advice and insight. Okay, very good. Moving on to the next agenda item, which would be the zoning ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 22-329, amending, consolidating, and restating the City of Hudsonville zoning ordinance and the City of Hudsonville downtown zoning ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Thank you, Larry, sitting on the Planning Commission. You and I have been partaking in these discussions, and it's been on the radar for a long, long time. And I believe, Dan, you wish to address us with a PowerPoint and explain the evolution of our renewed ordinances.
A little disappointing to see everybody left before this exciting zoning ordinance presentation.
If they only knew what they were missing.
Oh, I know, yeah. Funny feeling they'd still be gone, I don't know why. So yeah, this is the final step for adopting the city's new zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission did have a public hearing last month. There were no additional comments at that public hearing.
Is the light on? You got to hold the center button till the light, or the power button till the... Where's the receiver? There's a power button on it somewhere. Side, maybe?
It's getting even more exciting, isn't it?
Can Jill advance you?
I have no idea how that works.
Can you do it from your place?
Oh, yeah.
Well, just ask Jill, just ask Jill.
Yeah, there's like five slides, so yeah. So for some history, this ordinance is part of a grant the city received from Ottawa County, a part of what was called the Urban Smart Growth Demonstration Project. So these are the different documents that were adopted as part of that program. Through that program, Naderfeld was hired, and they helped through most of those documents until about four years ago, the main consultant left. So it was already an arduous task, became a little bit more arduous since it became a staff-run program after that. And it has been quite a challenge to get here, but it's already had quite the impact on the city with what's been going on in the downtown area, especially with Harvest Street, what's been going on around Terrace Square, the Village Green Plan. Next slide. So for the most part, what's in the new ordinance follows the guiding principles that are in the city's master plan. That was adopted back in 2015. And then on the next slide is a tiny sampling of some of the things that are in the zoning ordinance. The focus has been to make it more flexible and easy to use. So the first slide shows a flow chart, a step-by-step guide for how to use the zoning ordinance. The next image is our use matrix, which is color-coded throughout the ordinance. And then also, the last column shows where you can find criteria on the different uses, especially for special land use criteria. And then the last image is of the encroachment matrix, which is new to the ordinance as well. Some of the other key improvements in these zoning ordinance are streamlined PUD process, adding an accessory dwelling unit building type, improved accessory building section, zoning for the small cells for the 5G network, allowing for on-street parking to be used for parking requirements, a more accurate shared parking calculation for mixed-use buildings, adding criteria for parking RVs and trailers on residential property. And signs have been updated quite a bit, including allowing for murals. So a lot of the main changes that are in there. Next slide.
Just for the record, the Planning Commission spent dozens of hours going through those three slides and hammering out those details. So don't think that this is just something that was whitewashed. There was a lot of thought behind it by Dan and the staff, and then reviewed and manipulated a little bit by the Planning Commission, so...
Thanks, so yeah, I mean, kudos go to the Planning Commission for all the effort that you've been putting in over the past many meetings to get to this point. Thanks to Patrick, too, for a lot of the effort he's put into it, and many others, including the Ordinance Review Committee, especially to Sarah, you know, behind the scenes. She's the one who puts this into the document, you know, the text and the graphics, and believe it or not, the software we use doesn't even have a spell check, so that's caused a lot of re-review. Yeah, I know, it's a fancy software program, but not intended for text, apparently. Yeah, so and just a lot of, you're right, a lot of research and discussion on it.
A lot of details all over the place.
So once, if the city commission supports this motion, it will get published in the paper and will become effective around October 25. And then as part of this, I'll just dovetail into that, so we don't have to go back up here again, but the fence chapter of the city code is the next thing on your agenda, and that would be repealed just because everything that's in the city code is in the zoning ordinance. There was a lot of confusion because you had to look at both documents, and it really belonged in the zoning ordinance anyway. It's more of, it's not really a regulatory issue. And then Ottawa County does still have some money available. There's about $5,000 for a small project, so a meeting with the Ottawa County Planning Staff next month to discuss some small fund project we could do, you know, whether it's art or something that could be a nice little noticeable fund project. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions for Dan on the motion that's on the floor? Patrick?
Yeah, I just want to thank Dan and Sarah. I mean, he's summarized here in five slides, which is a culmination of hundreds of hours of work, and Dan and Sarah poured into it, and I think he kind of skimmed over the fact, but the main consultant, who was supposed to help kind of guide this through this process, ended up leaving Naderfeld and never was, we never really were appointed a replacement. So Dan had to pick up the slack, which is kind of the reason that it kind of took longer than normal. But this is a project that the city won't have to do things with, anything with, for a long, long time again. There'll be tweaks and things, you know, as they go, but we essentially, through this adoption, have brought our zoning standards up to the current standards. It deals with new things that didn't exist back under our old ordinance, like small cells and accessory dwelling units, and things that are hot topics today, marijuana use, and those types of things that didn't exist back in, golly, early 2000s or late 90s. Is that when we had our ordinance done? Our old zoning ordinance, Matt's city...
The original zoning ordinance was in 92.
92, yeah. So and so all of that work that went into the downtown ordinance to bring the downtown, now it's all citywide. And when you adopt this, you are essentially changing the zoning of everybody's property in the city, so just so you're aware. It is a big deal. It doesn't change it and create problems for them, but there are going to be situations where there's non-conformities that are created. And those may come back in terms of requests for variances and other things. But this is much more streamlined. It's much cleaner. It's much more logical. The city was long overdue in doing this, so I really want to thank Dan and Sarah for that.
I'd like to echo that. You and Sarah have done a fabulous job, and I appreciate that.
Any questions for Dan or the Planning Commission members? Hearing none. There's an open motion on the floor. Will the city clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. New ordinance is carries. Thank you. Moving on to the fence ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 22-330, repealing Chapter 10, Fences of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Hudsonville.
Second.
So it's been moved and supported. I think there was a memo on this, wasn't there? Yeah, there was a short memo. This just kind of cleans everything up, because everything's now in the ordinances, so there's no reason to have a separate chapter on the fence. Any questions for Dan or the Planning Commission on this? And I'll, I can build a 20-foot fence on my front yard now, is that...? All right, okay. Hearing none. I'll call...
It'll hide the fires.
Yeah. Wow, that had to come up. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, before I call for the adjournment of the city commission tonight, I'll just go down the line here. Tobin, you got any to add?
My turn. Just grateful to Patrick. Hopefully, there's ways we can celebrate with you here between now and when officially your tenure is done.
Thank you. Larry?
No, I would echo that, too. I told Patrick, he's done an amazing job. I've seen a few managers in my time, and he's done an amazing job, and very much appreciated.
Same. Good luck, Patrick. You will be missed, and Kayla, welcome back.
Thank you.
Same thing. You'll be missed. We're sending you off with a blessing. Go off and do great things. I think it'll work out for the best and always, so I'm very happy for you.
It's a win-win. It is.
Win-win.
Kayla, Kayla, welcome back. Baby's good.
And thank you, Dan, for your tremendous amount of work over the past years, doing all the legwork for everything that took place with the whole new zoning ordinance. It's really appreciated. Thank you.
City Clerk?
There is talks, so you'll know more later.
Um, there is talks, so you'll know more later. Um, Fountain of Honor ceremony Friday at 6:30 for Gary and Dave, reminder.
Yes, 6:30, uh, the Fountain of Honor. They're at Givens.
Mm-hmm. MML conference is next week.
And then we have a meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
And that is for?
PA 210 stuff and the library.
The library, okay. Uh, before I turn this over to Patrick for his final words, I would like to, uh, express thanks for the wonderful ribbon cutting last, uh, Friday, was it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, when we cut the ribbon on the new trail for, uh, the trailhead there. Um, that was a very significant event for the community. That trail will be there forever, and it will be heavily used, already is used, and it will be there for our children's children. And that represents a lot of work and effort on the staff, Victor, you, Dan, to pull it off. There was a lot of detail, and somehow, you just stuck with it, and we got it done. And there was a lot, a lot of collaboration to make that happen. And Patrick, both you guys, you didn't throw in the towel. There were a lot of opportunities to throw the towel and say, "We give up," but you never did. That's, uh, that was a huge win for the community. And we're already hearing a lot of people, uh, enjoy it. I don't know if you, if you haven't walked that yet, all of you should. It's just a wonderful, wonderful little trail through, through the wind there behind the schools. Um, Patrick, before I ask for an adjournment, I'll leave it over to you.
I just wanna express my sincere appreciation and gratitude for, um, all of the support, all of the, um, professionalism, the courtesy that you've all extended me. This has been a, a real joy, I should say, to, to serve on this board and this commission, because, you know, I look back for the vast majority of my time here. I mean, there was a small amount, I would say differently, but the vast majority, this has been a, a board that treats each other with courtesy and respect. I think you are all aligned in your vision for what you want for the best of the city, the general welfare of the city, and that's been a lot of fun to be part of that, 'cause we can all try to work on accomplishing these goals together. And I think the next manager will be stepping into a very, very good environment where there is no politicking going on, there's no-
Personal agendas.
Infighting. It's, it's, I mean, very rarely do we even have a split vote on things. So, um, so I wanna say thank you for that. You guys have been awesome to work with and for, and, um, I'll still be around. I'm still, obviously, very interested in what happens here in Hudsonville, and I'm, I'm gonna be, um, anxiously awaiting to see some of these projects that we got started come to fruition.
And you're still a resident?
Still a resident right now, yes. So, thank you. Very good. Um, last chance?
Uh, Urban Hay Day Saturday.
That's right. Urban Hay Day Saturday from when to when?
From 11 to 3.
11 to 3. Very good. Dan's got some. Dan?
Yeah, just basically to Patrick for all the positive impact he's had on the city for the past many years, and also on the Butterfield Trail. Thanks to the city commission, too, for approving the additional funds, 'cause I could've killed it right there.
We almost, and it was, yeah, yeah. It's an investment in our future. It really is. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some vote. Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.